And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe entered into a memorandum of agreement with Alpha One Defense, a nonprofit volunteer fire protection organization to provide fire protection for structural and wildland fires for communities within the Pinney Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas Alpha One Defense remains the main fire suppression support system for structural fires for the tribal community and responded to multiple home fires in the community in the last year. And whereas pursuant to the MOA with the tribe, Alpha One's defense's fire response remains volunteer and many of the local community homes do not have insurance that would otherwise supplement the services provided by Alpha One Defense. And whereas Alpha One Defense is building a firehouse centrally located on the OST reservation to assist with response staging, training, and storing fire trucks using the volunteer fire protection. And whereas the finance committee reviewed the request for thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars from the general fund for the Alpha One building project and recommends approval, will therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council hereby approves and authorizes allocation of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars from the general fund for the Alpha One building project. And be it further resolved that the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to effectuate the Alpha One building project funding. Motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilwoman Halverson. Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Jim Inks?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Donroy Gospair? Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Little Dog? John Steele, Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James, would you like to vote? Your vote is yes.
Fifteen yes, three not voting. Motion passed. Was added for finance. Okay, go ahead. It's all yours.
Okay, I have three from EBND. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribe, Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe approving the contract with Major Russell of Algrover Law Office, LLP, to serve as special counsel to the Ogallisoue Tribe specifically to assist Ogallisoue Division of Information Technology to implement Tribal Council Resolution 12-08 for broadband connectivity. Whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1851, 1 Stat 749, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15 Stat 635, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe organized underneath Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C., subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallisoue Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinney Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisoue Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribal Constitution at Article Four, Section 1B and 1F respectively best the Tribal Council with authority to hire legal counsel and to manage the economic affairs of the tribe. And whereas the tribe needs legal counsel to provide legal services to the standing committees of the Tribal Council and therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council hereby approves the contract attached heretofore to retain Major Russell of Algrover Law, LLP, to serve as special counsel to the Ogallisoue Tribe Division of IT to provide legal services, legal services to implement Tribal Council Resolution 12-08 regarding broadband connectivity at a rate of two hundred dollars per hour. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council hereby authorizes and direct the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president to execute the attached contract on behalf of the tribe. Motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Youngman, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Jim Inks? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Donroy Gospair?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Little Dog? John Steele, Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Yes.
Seventeen.
Seventeen yes, one not voting. Motion passed.
Next one. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe to reprogram and reallocate five hundred thousand of ARP-FRF funds that were originally allocated to Ogallisoue Tribe Spectrum Project by ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-three for associated legal fees for the tribe's broadband deployment. The Ogallisoue Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1851, 1 Stat 749, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15 Stat 635, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C., subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallisoue Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinney Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisoue Tribe and its membership. And whereas the tribe received payments from the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, FRF, which is administered by the U.S. Department of Treasury pursuant to American Rescue Plan, ARP Act, Public Law 117-2. And whereas the Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe previously enacted Tribal Council Ordinance Number Twenty-one dash fifty-three to authorize and approve the project budget for the Ogallisoue Tribe Spectrum Project and to authorize six million four hundred and ninety-seven, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars from the project's ARP Act FRM, FRF monies for the Ogallisoue Tribe Spectrum Project. And whereas the Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe previously enacted Tribal Council Resolution 2283 to reestablish the Ogallisoue Tribe Spectrum Project as Ogallala Kora Telecommunications. Whereas the Ogallisoue, whereas the Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe previously enacted Tribal Council Resolutions Number Twenty-two dash eighty-three to reestablish the Ogallisoue Tribe Spectrum Project as Ogallala Kora Telecommunications. And whereas pursuant to its 2023 interim final rule, Treasurer has stated that the Treasury has also made clear in guidance that FRF funds may be used to cover certain expenses related to administering programs established using the FRF funds. And whereas Treasury has clarified through questions ten dot two of its Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Final Rule, frequently asked questions that recipients may use funds for administering the SL-FRF program, including cost of consultants to support effective management and oversight, including consultation of ensuring compliance with legal, regulatory, and other requirements. And whereas Treasury has provided guidance to tribal governments through its 2023 FRF, FRF interim rule, Tribal Government Backsheet, that tribal governments may continue to use FRF funds in alignment with the 2022 final rule, where Treasury's 2022 final rule provides that administrative expenses must be reasonable and, how do you say, allocable, as outlined in CFR 200 dot four zero four and to CFR 200 dot four oh five. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe determines that the authorization, reprogramming, and reallocation of five hundred thousand of ARP-FRF funds that was originally allocated to the Ogallisoue Tribe Spectrum Project, now the Ogallala Kora Telecommunications LLC for associated legal fees for the tribe's broadband deployment and monies pursuant to this resolution is both reasonable and allocable. And whereas the OST Economic Business Development Committee met on September 8, 2023, and approved authorization, reprogramming, and reallocation of five hundred thousand of ARP-FRF funds for associated legal fees for the tribe's broadband deployment, provided such legal fees must meet Treasury's ARP Act Regulations at 31 CFR, subsection 35 dot six. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council does hereby approve the authorization, reprogramming, and reallocation of five hundred thousand of ARP-FRF funds for associated legal fees for the tribe's broadband deployment, provided such legal fees must meet Treasury ARP Act Regulations at 31 CFR, subsection 35 point six. Motion.
Good motion by Councilman Youngman, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Jim Inks? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? David Poyer? Donroy Gospair? Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Little Dog? John Steele, Senior? Craig Dillon?
Sixteen yes, two not voting. Motion passed.
I got one more. This one's kind of long, so relax and sit back for a while. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe to challenge a broadband serviceable location fabric data set that covers the tribe's lands found within the broadband data collection system and to request a tribal consultation with the Federal Communications Commission concerning the fabric and its challenge to it and to request technical assistance from the FCC on the matter. Whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe is the sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1851, 1 Stat 749, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15 Stat 635, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C., subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the Tribal Government, of Tribal Constitution, the Ogallisoue Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinney Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisoue Tribe and its membership. And whereas broadband data task force was established under the FCC to implement long overdue improvements to the FCC's broadband data and mapping tools. One such tool is the broadband data collection, which is used to collect broadband availability, subscription, and bulk crowd source challenge data for the use of the FCC's broadband mapping program. And whereas state, local, and tribal governments, governmental entities that provide facilities based fixed or mobile broadband internet access service are required to submit data to the BDC called the Broadband Serviceable Location Fabric Data Set. And whereas it appears that this fabric contains inaccurate information for the Pinney Ridge Indian Reservation, it may contain additional inaccurate information for the reservation as the tribe has not shared its addresses and GPS data with local ISPs that have uploaded their limited data for the Pinney Ridge Reservation. Whereas the work to correct the data may be extensive and costly. Whereas the inaccurate fabric may result in long-term negative effects on the tribes because the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program and the Digital Equity Act Program and possibly other programs as well will heavily rely on the fabric in the future. And whereas the tribe believes that it is in the best interest of the tribe to request a consultation with the FCC under Executive Order 13175 and the Ogallisoue Tribe Ordinance 11-10 to challenge the current data within the fabric for the challenge of the Pinney Ridge Indian Reservation concerning the tribe's challenge and to obtain technical assistance from the FCC on this matter, including on determining any potential payment for the work to correct the inaccuracies in the fabric. And whereas Executive Order 13175 requires each federal agency to ensure meaningful and timely input by tribal officials in the development of regulatory policies that have tribal implications. And whereas Executive Order 13175 requires agencies to avoid promulgating regulations that have tribal implications that would impose substantial direct compliance costs on Indian tribal governments and are not required by statute. And whereas indigenous communities view spectrum to be a natural resource, subject to their regulation and control just like any other natural resource found on tribal lands. And whereas the tribe has asserted its sovereignty over spectrum by receiving spectrum licenses from the FCC and by working to deploy broadband capabilities on the tribe's lands. And whereas it is important the tribe maintain its right to exercise sovereignty on the broadband arena. And whereas the FCC should recognize the tribe's sovereignty. And whereas the fabric must contain accurate data because of the long-term implications of incorrect data may have on the tribe. Whereas the tribes are allowed to challenge the fabric and the data in it, either through a challenge against select data or against a lot of data. And whereas the Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe has determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe and its members to file a bulk challenge to the fabric and the data in it. And whereas the Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe has determined that it needs consultation with the FCC regarding fabric and technical assistance from the FCC regarding the fabric and the tribe's challenge to it. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council does hereby approve filing a bulk challenge to the broadband serviceable location fabric data set that covers the tribe's lands found within the broadband data collection system. And be it further resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council does hereby request tribal consultation pursuant to Executive Order 13175 and Ogallisoue Tribe Ordinance 11-10 with the Federal Communications Commission Regarding Broadband Serviceable Location Fabric Data Set that covers the tribe's lands found within the broadband data collection system. And be it further resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council does hereby request technical assistance from the Federal Communications Commission regarding the tribes. I think that part needs to be changed a little bit. Regarding the tribe, the tribe's fabric and the tribe's challenge to it. There's an extra regarding in there. Be it further resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council directs the president of the Ogallisoue Tribe to ensure that this resolution is submitted to the Federal Communications Commission with any necessary cover letter and other materials. Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Youngman, second by Councilwoman Tapio, Councilman Halverson.
No, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to Mr. Randy Hughes for everything he's been doing on this broadband project and working on the many items that should have been addressed for many years legally and the tremendous hard work that he's been doing, you know, working on these technical assistance and all the other items that it's taking to get broadband here on our reservation. And I don't know if Randy has anything to say before we run the motion, but I do like to thank you, Mr. Hughes, for all the assistance that you're providing to the Ogallisoue Tribe, all the hard work that you're doing for this broadband project. So, thank you.
Yes. May I let him say a few words?
Thank you very much for the kind words, Councilwoman. There is a lot of work and we're trying to address it all. We appreciate all the motions. I know I do stand between you and lunch. This data was given to us from the Ogallisoue Tribe Department of Public Safety for straight addressing. We want to thank Rhianne Reddell, Chief of Police Young, Yuli Yellowboy, and Troy Ferguson for providing this data. And we're going to do the bulk challenge, and we hope you support this effort. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Randy. You know, Randy does a lot for one person, you know. So, I always see him. He's hard at work every day. So, just want to commend you on that with your staff, your building. Yes, Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Jim Inks? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior? Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Donroy Gospair?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Little Dog? John Steele, Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Sixteen yes, two not voting. Motion passed. Okay, are we done, Councilman Youngman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, law and order? Oh, we did? Okay. The shortfall? Yeah.
Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe approving the direct contract support cost shortfall claims, FY 2017. And whereas, whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C., subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallisoue Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections 1G authorizes Tribal Council to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe any available Tribal Council funds. And whereas because the Ogallisoue Tribe is experiencing a law enforcement emergency, it brought the case captioned Ogallisoue Tribe versus United States of America Civil Action Number 22-CV-05066-RAL, alleging the United States and its officials within the Department of the Interior have breached their legal enforceable treaty, trust, and statutory duties and obligations to the tribe by failing to provide requisite protection and law enforcement support and cooperation to the tribe and its citizens. And whereas part of the breach of the defendant's to meet their treaty, trust, and statutory duties and obligations owed to the tribe is their failure to pay the tribe its full direct contract support costs. And whereas while the tribe is negotiating with defendants, its actual direct contract support costs for its currently effective PL 93638 law enforcement contract to claim past shortfalls of direct contract support costs requires the filing of a contract support cost shortfall claims letter with the United States government pursuant to 25 U.S.C., Section 5331 within six years. Therefore be it, now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council does hereby approve the complination, submission, and negotiation of the tribe's contract support cost shortfalls for all years available under statute. And be it further resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council does hereby authorize President Frank Starr comes out to certify the claims letter on behalf of the tribe certification.
Motion.
So we have a motion by Councilman Youngman, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary, call for the vote.
Mr. Youngman, if I may, permission to insert the sovereignty clause on this, whereas number two. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Jim Inks? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior? Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Robin Tapio? Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Donroy Gospair?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Little Dog? John Steele, Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, three not voting. Motion passed. Okay, we got one more resolution for the Chief of Staff, Secretary.
This will coincide with the motion that she made approving Ms. Dreamer. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribe- Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe and unincorporated tribe, resolution of the Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe appointing Ms. Johanna Dreamer as the Ogallisou Tribe's Chief of Staff for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four Starr Comes Out Musso Administration. Whereas the Ogallisou Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States Government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution Article, Article Six and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven-four-nine, September seventh, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six-three-five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallisou Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the tribal constitution, the Ogallisou Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the pine ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisou Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe did adopt Ordinance eight, number eighteen eighteen on the second day of July twenty-eighteenth, which Ordinance at Section Two sets forth that the Chief of Staff shall be a political appointee recommended by the President of the tribe and appointed, appointment approved by the Tribal Council. And whereas the Chief of Staff is directed by Ordinance eighteen eighteen to oversee and support all tribal programs. And whereas on the thirteenth day of September twenty-twenty-three, the Tribal Council approved the selection and appointment of Ms. Johanna Dreamer as the OST Chief of Staff for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-four Starr Comes Out Musso Administration pending the taking and passing of a drug test and criminal background check. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe does hereby appoint Ms. Johanna Dreamer as the OST Chief of Staff for the Starr Comes Out Musso twenty-twenty-two, twenty-four administration pending her taking the end passing of a drug test and criminal background check. And be it further resolved that the Executive Committee is authorized to negotiate a contract with Ms. Johanna Dreamer in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand certification.
Got a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilwoman Alverson. And Councilwoman Tapio. Okay. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior. Jimmy. Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior. Howard Rooks. Austin Watkins, Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
James Cross. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Gospair.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Garfield Little Doug.
Yep.
John Steele, Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Sixteen yes, two not voting, motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Oh, okay, so, well, according to, no, just kidding. So, yeah, pretty much the rest is outside, so we can, okay, so we have a motion adjourned by Councilman Yellowboy, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary, call for the vote.
Chair, what happened to the gun buyback stuff?
Yes, that, that was a last-minute item. Did, did we draft anything up? Buyback? No, we don't have a resolution.
Well, I'll make a motion that we direct the Chief of Police and our, one of our tribal attorneys to bring back a, a plan and resolution for the regular session in regards to the gun buyback plan. Oh, and security. Well, my, my motion would just be for the gun buyback plan.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Little Doug, second by Councilwoman Tapio.
Gun buyback.
Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior. Jimmy. Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks. Austin Watkins, Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yep.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
James Cross. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. David Poyer. Donroy Gospair. Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Garfield Little Doug.
Yep.
John Steele, Senior. Craig Dillon.
Sixteen yes, two not voting, motion passed. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Yellowboy, second by Councilwoman Tapio, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior. Jimmy. Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks. Austin Watkins, Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
James Cross. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
No, Josh, yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Gospair. Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Garfield Little Doug. John Steele, Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Seventeen yes, one no. One not voting, okay. Okay, motion passed. Meeting adjourned at. One oh-six PM. Also, Councilman Yellowboy, the cake was from who?
There, the rodeo committee.
A rodeo committee?
Yeah.
What did they, oh.
So, the rodeo committees this year brought us, there's a cake here and they took one upstairs. It's a thank you to the tribal council for supporting the fair or the rodeo this year. So, they brought us a cake. So, if you want to look at it, it's behind a valve up there, and then there's one upstairs as well, so.
Piece of cake. Can you have, tell me when to buckle instead.
Everybody can move outside, they said lunch is ready. If you want to have somebody pray.
Okay, so you can gather outside and we'll have someone pray. For a meal.